Wednesday, August 27, 2025. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated January 9, 2025. Adequate electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in The Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, Bud Duble Center, Edgewood Acres, Elmtown, and the Winslow Township post offices. Permission statement: The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. District, in partnership with the community, and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Redden.
Here.
Todd.
Present.
Martin. Mr. McEnnis.
Present.
Ms. Peters.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Present.
And Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Have a clorm.
Can we also please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take this time just to recognize some of our dignitaries that are in the room tonight. First and foremost, our lovely Mayor Marie Lawrence from Winslow Township is here. Dr. Lavelle Pugh Bassett, President Camden County Community College, is here. And former Camden County Executive Superintendent, Ms. Lorraine Moore, former Director of Human Resources, is here. George Bethel, Commander of BFW Post 303. Brandon Glickus, Ward 1 Township Committee, is here. Darius People, Ward 2 Township Committee, will be here. Our beloved Ray Watkins, Ward 3 Township Committee, is here. Our favorite Winslow Fire Commissioner, Anthony Sorelli, is here. Ms. Angela Tuitt, former school board member, is here. And Mr. Anthony Askew, former school board member, is here. Also, Mr. Robert Sean Chester, former school board member, is present as well. And Mr. Carlos Vascos, former school board member, extends his heartfelt, warm wishes to Dr. Carcomo. We also like to recognize Coach Russell Bates and his wife, Carolyn Bates, as former committee woman. And the honoree of our track naming for the Winslow Athletic Track, Russell Bates and Carolyn Bates, is here. Mrs. Carolyn Carter, former member of the Citizens Arisvee Committee, is here. Reverend Daniel Spencer, St. Matthew's Baptist Church, is here. And the members, and all the members of Omega Phi Phi Kappa Kappa's here. And Mr. Cleveland Foote is also here. Also, Chief Don Lemons is also here. Former board member Rebecca Nuevez is also here. And I do believe I see Ms. McClendon, former board member, is here too. Let's give a round of applause for everybody that's in participation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. Mr. Clark.
2024-2025 District Goals. Number one, student achievement. Continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students. This shall include: Conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning. Consistently review student assessment data to guide and redirect teaching. Continue to provide supplemental activities, for example tutoring, enrichment periods, to address student deficiencies. Benchmark assessment for ninth grade math and language arts. Number two, create a safe and positive learning environment for students and staff. Strictly enforce the district's student code of conduct. Focus on upper elementary school students to modify student behavior in the early grades. Reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. Approach discipline with care, respect, and the desire to see the good in all students. Number three, increase parent, caregiver, and community engagement in education. Provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders. Continue with communications consortium. Focus on refining our communication methods and messages to better market our schools. Continue with our public relations with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Can we move on to awards and presentations?
Mr. President, we do have one.
Okay.
Ms. Pitts.
And as an incoming freshman, it's certainly interesting coming apart of national... I'm sorry. Forgive me, I have a cold. And as an incoming freshman, certainly, she is ambitious, and she wants to be able to earn enough community service time, because as those of us who have had children, and we know that being able to demonstrate that you've done community service is important in order to be accepted. So at the last meeting, and kudos out to parents, at the last meeting, Gianna's parents said, gee, I understand it's a family day, is it possible that she can earn some community services? Absolutely. Well, here we go. Gianna, incoming freshman, came Saturday at 12 noon and didn't leave until 5:00. So she certainly, absolutely, did her part with regards to community service. And to that end, we would like to thank her. We thought it would be appropriate, because she will need this certainly, to present Gianna with this lovely certificate. And it's a certificate of appreciation, and it reads that this certificate of appreciation is proudly presented to Gianna Gilliam for eight hours of volunteer services rendered to the Winslow Township Board of Education on August 23, 2025, at the Winslow Township Family Day. August 25, 2025, and is signed by Mr. John Shaw, President, Mr. Joe Thomas, Vice President, and myself, Cheryl Pitts, Member. Congratulations, Gianna.
Congratulations. Dr. Carcomo.
Okay.
As we all know, in this, in this room, this is Dr. Carcomo's last board meeting before she officially retires. And she's, she's been with us for a while and done a lot of great work for Winslow Township. So, on behalf of the Winslow Township Board of Education, we have a proclamation for Dr. Dorothy Ann Carcomo. So, I'm gonna read it. Give me a, give me about an hour, because it's a long one. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Whereas Dr. Dorothy Ann Carcomo has dedicated 52 years to the field of education, serving as the Assistant Superintendent of Winslow Township Public Schools for 16 of those years from 2009 to 2025. Assistant Superintendent of Public Personnel Services, Paterson, New Jersey, from 2006 to 2008. Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Testing Township from 2002 to 2006. Director of Curriculum, Red Bank Borough Public Schools from 2001 to 2002. Principal and Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Red Bank Borough Public Schools from 1997, 2001. Supervisor of Instruction, Meridian Academy at Coltsnet from 1991 to 1997. In 19 years of teaching experience, her unwavering dedication to the field of education is a source of inspiration for all. And whereas Dr. Carcomo's academic journey is a testament to her unwavering dedication to education, she has earned a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education with a minor in reading, a Master's of Arts degree in special education, a Master of Arts degree in developmental education, and a Doctor of Education. Her academic achievements stand as a beacon of her lifelong commitment to the field of education, inspiring all who have the privilege of working with her. And whereas Dr. Carcomo, a transformational leader of unparalleled influence, possesses certifications as a school administrator, principal, supervisor, teacher of the handicapped, and elementary K through 8. Her kaleidoscope educational background spans from her classroom to the superintendent's office. Her formal training in the myriad of responsibilities that span her professional career empower her to lead a school district when called upon to do so, make her, making her the quintessential transformational leader. Her influence has left an indelible mark on the field of education, inspiring others to follow in her footsteps. And whereas, under the visionary leadership of Dr. Carcomo, Winslow Township Schools have experienced a profound transformation. Her student-centered approach has led the implementation of the district's first-ever curriculum aligned to New Jersey learning standards and national core standards. Her efforts have also enhanced technology, technology resources, coordinated new textbook adoptions, implemented numerous supplemental programs. Her Every Student Every Day Initiative has significantly improved student engagement and academic performance. Her development and implementation of procedural manuals have streamlined operations and enhanced student support, leaving an indelible mark on the school district. We are proud to recognize her leadership and innovations. And under Dr. Carcomo's leadership, schools have embraced a student-centered approach that aligns with the district's learning objectives and outcomes. The approach prioritizes a challenging academic and co-curriculum environment that recognizes students as diverse individuals expected to achieve a proficient, distinguished levels, fostering a culture of high expectations and continuous improvement that embraces STEM learning from pre-K through 12. Emphasize, emphasis on a holistic interdisciplinary method where students explore real-world problems by drawing connections between those five areas: science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. These approaches fosters critical thinking, creativity, problem-solving skills, and now therefore be resolved that Winslow Township Board of Education hereby accepts the retirement of Dorothy Carcomo, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Testing and Instruction and for supporting the superintendent in the efficient and effective operation of the school district with a focus on improving student achievement and ensuring a positive learning environment. Dr. Carcomo's dedication to creating a safe and nurturing environment for our students has been instrumental in their academic and personal growth. Winslow Township Board of Education does hereby recognize and honor Dorothy, Dr. Dorothy Carcomo, for her years of impactful educational service, particularly at the Winslow Township School District. Be it further resolved, the School Board President and Business Administrator Board Secretary convey with heartfelt appreciation towards commendation for exemplary performance and dedication as an educational leader to Winslow Township School District and the Winslow Township School Board Camden County hereby salutes the impact of Dr. Dorothy Carcomo as a strategic planner, crisis and change management expert, data-driven decision-maker, and mission-focused Assistant Superintendent Leader upon her retirement from the district. This board incorporates this proclamation into the board's minutes, and a copy will be presented by the Board President, Mr. John M. Shaw Jr., to Dorothy, Dr. Dorothy Carcomo. This proclamation is humbly submitted by the Winslow Township School Board Camden County, New Jersey, on the 27th day of August, 2025. of months and he stepped up, really gonna be... Thank you. I appreciate the notice we have this gift. Because nobody could figure out what to get you. I hold it.
I have two hands. I would like to publicly thank the board for the opportunity to work in Winslow. So, out of my entire career, I believe this has been the most rewarding, and it has been the longest place that I've stayed. We were military families, so we moved around quite a bit, and that afforded me some great experiences and opportunities, and things that I learned along the way, I was able to bring here and hopefully make a difference in the education of the children here. So I personally thank you very, very much, and I'm not really good at this, I'm a behind-the-scenes person, I'm always the one preparing for someone else, but it seems that I have been caught off guard a couple of times. But I want you to know that I truly, truly appreciate the recognition and the opportunity. Ms. Tutz, thank you so much. I wondered why I looked out in the audience and I saw people that I knew. I saw Mr. and Mrs. Moore, and I said to her, I hadn't seen her in a while, and then I saw some of my sorority sisters in red. And so now I know why they're here. But thank you, everyone, for coming, and I will miss Winslow, but I will forever be a part of Winslow. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm going to ask Dr. Carcomo to please come back up to the podium, and I promise you, my proclamation will not be like... It was great. Good evening. First off, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And on behalf of- And on behalf of myself and the governing body members, I have a proclamation to present to you. But we do have a couple of governing body members. We have Committeeman Ray Watkins from Ward 3. Please stand. Committeewoman Evelyn Leverick from Ward 2. And Committeeman Glickers from Ward 1. Please stand as I read this proclamation. Whereas Dr. Dorothy Carcamo is being recognized today for her dedication to the Winslow Township School District and her career serving our youth within the Winslow Township community and beyond. And whereas Dr. Dorothy Carcamo has faithfully served Winslow Township School District with distinction and dedication as Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And whereas Dr. Carcamo, after years of dedicated service, will now retire to begin a new chapter of life, leaving behind a legacy of excellence and inspiration, extraordinary visionary skills, and we wish her much happiness in her retirement. Now therefore, I urge all citizens to recognize Dr. Carcamo and her many accomplishments as she begins her well-deserved retirement. Marie D. Lawrence, Mayor Township of Winslow, dated August 27, 2025. And I do apologize because I do have to leave. We have another event going on at the township, our final painting in the park. So enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I could just, before you leave, in the event that there are some of us here who may not see you again, uh, the mayor, uh, on Friday will celebrate her birthday. And so I thought that, uh, that would be nice. Since she's here, for us to just sing. Just, uh, just come ahead and sing happy birthday to the mayor.
Happy early birthday, Mayor. Moving on to correspondences.
Mr. President, we have no correspondence.
I have a motion to approve the following meeting minutes of the regular meeting of August 13, 2025, open and closed session.
Peterson move for approval of the minutes from August 13, 2025, open and close session.
Any questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dreddin?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Martin? Anis? Ms. Peters?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to Board Committee reports. Mr. Thomas, anything from the Athletic Committee?
Mr. President, I do have something from the Athletic Committee. I mean, we had such a great year last year. I want to thank the committee members, Ms. Wanda Glod and you, Mr. President John Shaw, for being great committee members of this illustrious committee. And so many times we talk about athletics because athletics are the dynamic dimension that we, that we grow accustomed to, but we never talk about the academics that go along with the athletics. And I just have a report from last year because, you know, we had six different type of state championship athletic pursuant. So I just want to give you some GPAs of them following teams. Our, 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 our boys' basketball team as a whole had a 3.0 GPA. Our state championship football team had a 3P, 3.0 GPA. Our boys' indoor track team had a 3.5 GPA. Our girls' basketball had a 3.3 GPA. And our girls' outdoor track had a GPA of 3.7. And our girls' indoor track team had a GPA of 3.9, giving a cumulative 3.4 GPA average for our athletic state championship field. And I just wanted the community to know that academics matter and athletic as well. Thank you.
I'd like to add on to the Athletic Committee. We have the meeting with the game tomorrow night at Ocean City or Ocean County with the IMG against Winslow Township High School Football Team. Um, for all of you all who want to go, if you don't know how to buy your tickets, you can contact me and I'll give you the link to buy your tickets. But please come out and support our Winslow Township High School Football Team tomorrow. This is gonna put Winslow Township on a widespread map across the United States because we're playing against some of the elite football players in the United States tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glod. Ms. Martin, the citizens, as a citizens advisory committee?
Do you have news?
Can I, can I just make a real quick statement to you, Ms. Nieves? Um, because I ju- you just sent it out. Um, you can read it, but we're not gonna make any recommendations today. You, um, because, uh, recommendations, if you could please, at least give us 48 hours notice of the recommendations. That way it gives, gives us a little bit of time to go through them with the superintendent. That way we can have time to be able to get some, uh, answers for the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, that's better. Uh, thank you, members of the board. Uh, so we're about a month behind. So these are actually, the report that you have is our July. So for August and September, I will read one report at each board meeting. Um, so for July, we met via Zoom. Uh, topics that we discussed were the recent graduation ceremony. Uh, we received a lot of positive feedback from the community in regards to crowd control and accessibility improvements. Um, there was a respectful tribute for the deceased student, allowing the mother to receive the diploma. So the community definitely appreciated that as well. Um, just some updates on our previous recommendations, which you said you would, um, for the, the next board meeting. The Academic and Arts Hall of Fame proposal sent to the Policy Committee. Um, the principals agreeing to publicize the HSA events on their website and in social media and out to the community as well. Um, we also discussed the track field naming decision. Um, we also discussed literacy and tutoring initiatives, um, the discussion regarding the effectiveness of the I-Ready program and its implement- implementation challenges, a proposal to utilize before and after-school care time for targeted tutoring, the suggestion to involve college students for observation hours in tutoring program, and the recommendation to explore reading assist programs in Delaware. Now, those aren't, um, recommendations, just things that we discuss. Um, there were some special education and behavioral concerns, uh, issues with timely classification of students needing special education services, uh, discussion on the liability and safety concerns with unclassified students exhibiting severe behavioral problems, and the suggestion to consider child neglect angle if parents refuse evaluation and services. Um, we also discussed communication improvements, a proposal to use text messaging for parent communications, and discussion on improving awareness of available tutoring services. Uh, the formal recommendations that came out of that meeting, there were four. Um, one, the, we recommend that the Policy Committee revisit the volunteer policy as community members and parents can help to bridge the gap between shortages, improve stakeholder engagement, and enrich student achievement. Uh, note, we allow community volunteers for sports, why not other activities? There is a policy in place to properly background check and vet volunteers. We just need it to be enforced. Uh, the second recommendation was requesting a status report on the tutoring program effectiveness and participation. Uh, three, follow-up on any policy committee exploring the Academic and Arts Hall of Fame as previously mentioned. And number four, follow-up in regards to when the technology audit will be completed and how results will be dispersed to the community and action taken on its recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, anything from the Education Committee? Mr. McManus, the Marketing Committee?
Observation, the number of folks in attendance from, uh, the town, it seemed a little bit lighter than normal, but that might have just been because of vacation. Um, but still well-attended. Uh, parking seemed to be a little bit difficult, uh, o- over there. But however, there was still a good turnout. I would like again to personally thank Operations for the timely delivery and retrieval of the board property that included tables, chairs, canopy banners, et cetera. And I would also personally like to thank Ms. Dreddin, Ms. Pitts, and one Ms. Jen McManus for donating some things that we were able to pass out to the community. Um, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm amazed. Ms. Ms. Pitts and Ms. Dreddin are, they come through in the clutch in that regard all the time. So thank you for that. Uh, the last board meeting was erroneously reported that our, that committee meeting would next meet on October 23rd. Uh, that was an error. Uh, next meeting is September 3rd, 2025. Time and location to be determined.
And don't forget. Volunteer.
Yes, incoming freshman, very exciting. And with the, and service with a smile, if I might add, Mr. President.
Thank you, everybody, on Volunteer Family Day. Moving on to Operations.
No menace at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dreddin. Um, Policy Committee?
Mr. President, the Policy Committee met, um, today prior to our meeting at 6 o'clock, and we reviewed and went over, uh, briefly, uh, these four policies. Policy number 0143, board member election and appointment. Policy number 1620, administrative employment contracts. Policy number 2422, statutory curricular requirements. And policy number 5339.01, excuse me, student son protection. In addition to that, we did have a conversation, Mr. President, with regards to, uh, Chromebooks as it relates to technology and as it also relates to protocol. Um, the board, the board, the, um, policies that we discussed today, the board will receive them, uh, no later than, um, next board meeting so that they can be on, approved for first reading. And, uh, our next, um, Policy Committee meeting will be, um, will take place 6 o'clock before our meeting of September 24th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pitts. Mr. Thomas, the two township committees?
Yes, so coming out of the economic development, I just wanted to notice, uh, signify that the Winslow Township, uh, economic development continue to expand and grow with multiple housing complexes being built and being going forward. Um, the must-desired roundabout on Ciclare Road is now being installed. That may cause some bus delays during the day over there on Ciclare Road. Also something we need to pay attention to, there's an encore development that's coming to town that we need to pay close attention to, could give, uh, could affect our enrollment and in a positive or negative way. So we need to pay close attention to that. And the Economic Development, uh, Committee is still pursuing quarterly meetings with the township so we can do some collaborative efforts going forward to make sure whatever development is done, that our Board of Education is, is in stock, lock, barrel, and can provide the best education for our community as we move forward. Thank you.
As far as the Planning Board, I unfortunately missed the Planning Board meeting due to our Special Board of Education meeting last Thursday. So I don't have any updates on that, and I do apologize on that. Um, but our next board meeting, I will do my, and I just came back from vacation. So I will have an update on that at our next board meeting. Moving on to our Superintendent's Report. And I have a motion to approve our Superintendent's Report as it's recommended for approval by the Superintendent from the top of page 3 to the middle of page 8.
Peterson move for approval of Superintendent's Report as recommended. Item A and B found on page 3 through 12.
Second that?
It's 3 through 8, so the record's clear. Thank you.
Um, any questions? I just wanna ask one question, um, and then make one remark. So on, oh, I didn't write down the, on page 6, for the high school community days, I, there's Fall and Spring Community Day. Under Sports doesn't have one. Okay. 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 Um, and then I just want to give everybody a la- on the board a last second chance to make sure they go over the, on item number 23, the 25, 26 district goals before we do the roll call to approve them.
Can you speak louder?
On item number 23, make sure you go, take one more second to go over the 25, 26 district goals before we approve them. And I apologize, my, my throat is a little hoarse. I'm not gonna say why because I don't want.
I'll say why.
Uh, Mr. Long might get upset.
I'll say why. He was in, he was in Queens last night at the Mets game. cheering against the Phillies. And texted me and harassing me as he was doing it.
Scandal counselor.
Yeah, I get my hard time.
All right. There's no more questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dreddin?
Yes.
Ms. Glod?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus? Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for all their hard work on the 25, 26 district goals. Dr. Carcamo, thank you very much for helping us. Moving on to the Business Administrator Board Secretary's Report. May I have a motion to approve the Business Administrator Board Secretary's Report as it's recommended for approval by the Business Administrator Board Secretary?
Peterson move for approval of the Business Administrator Board Secretary's Report, item A and B found on page 8 through 12 as recommended by the Business Administrator Board Secretary.
I'll second that.
Any questions? There are no questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dreddin?
Yes.
Ms. Glod?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the Personnel Report. And I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report as it's recommended for approval by the Superintendent from the middle of page 12 to the bottom of page 16.
Peterson move for approval of the Superintendent's Personnel Report recommended by the Superintendent. Item A, 1 through 10, found on page 12 through 16.
Second that, approve the Personnel Report as the Superintendent recommends.
Any questions? Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dreddin?
Yes.
Ms. Glod?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to our addendum. Could everybody please take out your addendum and take a few minutes to look at it? Could everybody please take out your addendum and take a few minutes to look at it? I have a motion to approve the Board Secretary's Report as it's recommended for approval by the Business Administrator Board Secretary from the top of page one to the middle of page two.
Peterson move for approval of the Board Secretary's Report as approved by the Business Administrator Board Secretary's recommendation. Item A, 1 and 2, found on page 1 through 2.
McManus, second that.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Dredin?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Anis?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report as it's recommended for approval by the Superintendent from the middle of page two to the middle of page three.
Peterson move for approval of the Personnel Report as recommended by the Superintendent. Item A, 1 through 4, found on page 2 through, the third page.
Have a second?
Second that.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. For page 2, item, Roman numeral 2, A, 1. For the two Secretaries hired for the Board of Ed, are they replacements or are they new hires? Are they replacing previous Secretaries or are there new hires added to the Secretaries that we already have?
One is a new secretary. Well, they're replacements.
They're replacements? All right.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Glod?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the Open Public Records Act.
President, we have a request timeframe.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving on to informational items. Moving on to old business. Any old business? Moving on to new business. Is there any new business? Mr. Long, you're up. Moving on to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of we ask that speakers follow the guidelines for making public comments. The Board Secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. We'd ask that you kindly respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your full name and town of residence. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, in the event we're unable to answer your question, please provide your name, address, telephone number, and or email address where you can be contacted, and your questions will be answered within a reasonable timeframe. Lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Boyle, do we have anybody that's signed up for public comments?
You got to open it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to open public comments? I'm sorry.
Peterson move for approval to open public comments?
McManus, second to open public comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anybody that signed up tonight, Ms. Boyle?
Yes, we have Ms. Lynn Foat.
Good evening, board members. How are you this evening?
Wonderful.
Good, it's good to see you all. I wanted to thank you for the exemplary job that you all are doing and glad to be here. Been a resident of Winslow Township most of my life, actually, since I was about 11, and I'm close to 60 now, so it's been a minute. And certainly enjoy being here. I want to bring to the attention of the board, speaking on behalf of my wife, Melissa Foat, who is an employee of, currently of Winslow Township Board of Education, and she enjoys working here. What I wanted to bring to the attention of the board is that she's glad to be going to a new position that you all voted on and approved, so we're thankful for that. One of the things we wanted to bring to the, the board's attention is that according to NJ Statute 18A, Section 17-2, once you have become a tenured employee, which my wife joined about, about seven years ago, so she is a tenured employee according to the law, that you cannot necessarily have a reduction in salary. And so my, my idea, or my question to bring to you, to all for consideration is to look at the salary, which is a little bit less than what she's currently getting, and I'm hoping that according to the law and keeping with the law, that you would raise that to match, match occurrence that salary according to the statute.
So if I can respond, Mr. President, we're not going to discuss personnel items in an open public forum. That's not appropriate. I will just say that I'm very familiar with the issue. Dan Long is also very familiar with the issue. We've spoken with Mr. Davis extensively about it. We're very comfortable with our legal research and the advice we provided to Mr. Davis, upon which he agrees. So at this point in time, I would leave it at that. But the request is heard, sir. Thank you.
Okay, just one other question. So from my understanding, are you saying that you are keeping it as it's been?
We're not, I'm not saying anything.
Okay, got it. And I'm able to get a transcript of tonight's meeting?
You can get minutes and it's video, it's, you can get a video, yeah. Certainly.
Fantastic. Once again, thank you all for doing exemplary job, and we look forward to continuing the discussions and hope we can come to a fair agreement on this. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes those that have signed up.
Anybody online?
Peterson move for approval to close public comments?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Long, executive session?
Yes, sir. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, we'll be adjourning into executive session on August 27th, 2025 at about 7:50 PM. Of the nine exceptions under the law on which we can enter into executive session, this will be item eight, matters involving employment and appointments, terms and conditions of employment, and this is relative to the position of interim superintendent. I also understand that we'll be adjourning to discuss a matter, a student matter, which are by federal and state law considered confidential. That would be item number one, student matter discussion. Dr. Cockemo has asked to be added. I would anticipate that we will be in that executive session approximately 45 minutes.
Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Peterson move for approval to go into executive session.
Second to move into executive session.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Glod?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.